I'm Heather Peffley, Clerk for the City of Manistee. The City Council's April 14th, 2020 work session being conducted remotely, where all meetings of the City Council are in separate locations and not at the City Hall Council chambers, will be called to order by Mayor Roger Zelinski shortly. As always, this meeting will be recorded and will be broadcast on Manistee TV Channels 189 and 190 and available at manistee.tv.org. There will be no video associated with this meeting, solely audio. The reason for this is projecting video through Zoom sometimes causes a delay, which makes communication in this scenario difficult and awkward. In just a moment, we will start individually unmuting the microphones of each member of the City Council and the City Manager. We are unmuting them individually to make sure there is no disruptive audio feedback coming from each of them. Doing so individually allows us to easily identify the source of any disruptive audio issues. Finance Director Ed Bradford is assisting me with this meeting, and you may hear his voice if we have any issues that require his assistance. The microphones of all members of the City Council, the City Manager, and the City Clerk will always be live unless there's an audio disruption. I will now begin to unmute and check each microphone that will be live during the meeting. Councilmember Cooper, can you hear me?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Mayor Zelinski, can you hear me? Councilmember Sipsick, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Councilmember Schmansky, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Mayor Protem Grabowski, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Councilmember Poniat, Martin Poniat, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
City Manager Thad Taylor, can you hear me? As a reminder, councilmembers, please clearly state your name before speaking. Now that the activating the microphones is complete, Mayor Roger Zelinski will call the meeting to order and share some additional information about how this meeting and likely city meetings for the foreseeable future will be conducted. Mayor Zelinski, we are ready to proceed with the meeting.
Thank you. We're going to call the meeting to order. As an important step in preventing the spread of Corona virus-19 virus, our Governor Gutchen Whitmore issued an executive order authorizing public boards in Michigan to conduct their meetings remotely. This is a critical step to help stop the spread. All aspects of how this meeting is being run is in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, as modified by the executive voter, and has been reviewed by the City Attorney. The City of Manistee is taking various steps to do our part during this pandemic, and this is one of them. We need to keep members of the public, our City Council, city staff, healthy. Therefore, no member of the public, City Council, or city staff are present in the council chambers. We will now begin the work session. Work session items. First on the agenda is public comments on work session-related items. All individuals attending the virtual work session wait in a virtual waiting room with their microphones muted. When it comes time for public comments, each person waiting in the virtual waiting room will be called individually by the City Clerk by the last four digits of their telephone number. Individuals will be asked if they have a comment or if they are passing. It is very important that those giving comments have a good phone connection and no sound or noise whatsoever in the background. Televisions and all forms of audio should be muted. Otherwise, there will be a disruptive audio. If the issue could, if the issue cannot be corrected by the caller, we will move on to the next person in line. Please be aware for those calling that when the first call-in, their full telephone number may be visible for a period of time on the recording, although we will work quickly to alter what displays so that just the last four digits of your telephone number. We will now take public comments. The work session discussion topics for those who do not have an agenda are discussions on the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget and capital improvement plan. The City Clerk will now take over and accept public comments on work session agenda items.
Good evening, number 4551. Do you have a comment, or would you like to pass? Good evening, number 8194. Do you have a comment, or would you like, okay, thank you. I see no other public comments, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to the discussion. Discussion on fiscal year 2020-2021 budget and capital improvement plan. City Manager Mr. Taylor and Finance Director Mr. Bradford, you're up.
Mayor and councilmembers, I wanted to make a few comments, and after that, Ed will add his comments. But first of all, I want to remind council that we, that staff is proposing a balanced budget without the use of fund balance, and it's realistic. That said, given our current situations with the pandemic, there are uncertainty with revenues, primarily from, from the state. And of great concern is our statutory revenue sharing, and that's potentially the most volatile, because that is, because it's a statute and authorized by the legislators, it can be changed. And the, since probably 2002, the state has shown a tendency that when they have budget issues, they balance their budget on the backs of the local governments and reduce statutory revenue sharing. So we, we have to wait and see what those ramifications are. In terms of the constitutional revenue sharing, that's, that certainly is guaranteed by the Constitution, but it's based on the amount of tax revenues. And so we anticipate at the state level, there's going to be some tax revenue issues which could likely lead to a lower distribution of constitutional revenue sharing. Also of concern is our gas tax revenues. We, we would expect less from the state due to restrictions on travel, fear of travel after the stay-home, stay-safe ban lifted and other issues. And also, again, not a, a state issue, but our interest income will be impacted in a negative fashion. What I've heard and read about the state's budget is that they're projecting somewheres between a $1 billion and $3 billion deficit in their current fiscal year. Now, I know they have a rainy day fund of over $1 billion that, I don't know exactly how they're going to use that to offset their deficit. So the, the point being is that this budget, once adopted, is certainly going to have to be men, amended as we move forward and gain a little bit more clarity on our revenue situation, especially from the state. As I said last week, I just reiterated that fact, and also that as more information becomes apparent, staff will work on providing some recommendations and options for council to address any budget shortfalls. We've, we've told the staff several times that in the, in this fiscal year until the end of the fiscal year, to spend the minimum necessary to maintain operations and provide services. So we're starting to take a look at our budget, harder look than we normally do, and just decide what should be spent and shouldn't be spent. And finally, staff is tracking our, all of our expenses related to the pandemic, and then we will submit those to FEMA for reimbursement. We don't know if we'll get all, we don't know if we'll get a percentage of it, but we, we are led to believe that we're going to get something back from FEMA. So those are my general comments. This is obviously a very, very unique time. In my 40 years in local government, I've not seen a budget time impacted in this fashion with so much uncertainty. But again, I reiterate that the staff has put together a balanced budget. We're not using fund balance. It's very realistic, and we are acutely aware of the need that we're going to have to provide council with information and options to amend the budget as we go forward. Ed, did you have something to add?
No, I mean, I think, I think I would just reiterate what you had mentioned. There's just going to be a real need for flexibility over the next 12 to 18 months as this thing plays out. And, you know, as more information becomes available, we'll be able to, to do a little better job of guiding council as to where this is going to end up. But, you know, up until a month ago, you know, none of us anticipated any of this happening. So things are fluid, they're in flux, and, you know, there, there's going to be some more stimulus. I will say on the, on the positive side, it's not all doom and gloom. It's likely to, to have a beneficial impact on interest rates when we're issuing debt, because the Federal Reserve obviously has slashed those. So that should be helpful as we close financing on the rural development phase two and potential capital improvement bonds. And I, and I'll just, you know, echo what Thad said as well about trying to control costs, not only in the upcoming fiscal year, but right now, today, where we're really trying to squeeze things so that we can, you know, preserve cash as we might need it for the, for the future.
Mayor, this is the... No, Mayor, I was just going to say, I think that's the...
Is that the end?
Sorry, sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
I just, I didn't mean to interrupt. Is there any questions from council, anything they want to talk about? Any budget questions?
Mayor Mick Schmansky, the only, as I was going through the budget, the only area that I'm somewhat concerned about would be spending money on our Marina at this time, as far as a large investment of capital for the capital improvement plan. And again, I understand, when, when the budget was created, we didn't have any of these concerns, but knowing that we've already closed our, our ramp, not really sure what the future's being, that's, you know, a half a million dollars that we could kind of, in a balance, to kind of cover some more major issues that may come up between now and our, our next budget cycle. The only other thing is, is that I would ask all of the department heads to kind of relook at, at what they consider to be their highest priorities. So if we do have to cut, they've really relooked at, you know, the most important to the least important, so that when it comes time to making difficult financial decisions, that they're well in the loop.
Mayor, if, if I could respond to those?
Sure, go ahead.
Hey, first, in, in terms of the Marina, I fully understand your concern. We applied for a waterways grant through the state. We won't know if we get that grant until probably September. So if, I mean, if we got the grant, we would have time to evaluate, number one, whether we wanted to accept the grant and whether we wanted to move forward with replacement of those docks. So I would hope by September, we would have a, a little clearer picture of where we are with our revenues and be in a better position to make that decision. Also, the, the grant match, we've, we've, we're going to be applying to the community foundation to help us with that grant match, and also the grant match is going to be included in that bond that we proposed to council. And it's going to take us several months to, to work through the process to get that bond set and ready to go. So I guess in summary, we've got, you know, probably until September to, to provide council some guidance on how we should move on that Marina.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, and then in terms of the, the thought of, of having the staff start looking at what they could or couldn't cut in the next year's budget, this morning I talked with Ed Bradford, and I asked him to take a look at what we got, what we've received this year in statutory revenue sharing and also in constitutional revenue sharing, and break it down into percentages and go from 5% to 30% on both of those revenue sources. And then once I have that information, I'm going to get it to staff, and then we're going to have a, a virtual meeting next year, or next week, to start talking about what kind of scenarios would we foresee if we reduced our revenue sharing by anywhere between 5% and 30%? And then ask them to provide myself and Ed with some cuts that they could make in the proposed budget to address any revenue sharings and, or any revenue sharing cuts between 5% and 30%. So we're already working towards that. Certainly, we hope we don't have to implement those, but we're going to be prepared, with some options to provide council.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has any questions, concerns, or comments about the budget?
I do. This is Linda Beaton. Okay, I, I would like to talk about the revenue sharing from the oil and gas fund. We have a 4% spending rule on that, and we have a balanced budget right now. And if I look at page 145 to the budget, it looks like we got something close to $1.3 million in our reserves. And I don't know particularly whether that's all cash or whether that's, you know, a combination of different assets. But anyway, I was thinking, if you take out all the zeros, and boil this down to families, to a family looking at this, I'm thinking to myself that if I had money in my savings account and the stock market was down the way that it is, I would want to leave as much money in that so-called oil and gas fund, which could be my IRA, as possible to grow out a little bit faster. Has anybody considered looking at this?
Councilmember Beaton, this is Ed Bradford, I think I can help address that a little bit. So we look at the oil and gas fund as a long-term endowment, and, you know, we're not looking at six months, or one year, or three years, or five years even, we're looking at 20 to 40 years of a time horizon. And the way the fund is set up is to support, actually, support general fund and capital improvement fund spending, especially in times like this. The fund has taken quite a hit with the stock market being down, you know, approximately 30%. But because of the way the spending rule works, it didn't impact the amount of the spendable allowance for this fiscal year, because that's determined as of 12/31/2019, looking back on 12 quarters. I have run some projections as to what that would look like moving forward, assuming, you know, a reasonable stock market recovery. And most of the professionals that I've talked to think that this is probably going to be a V-shaped recovery, meaning it's going to be much, a much faster recovery than maybe a traditional recession, although, again, there's a lot of moving pieces. So if we were to cut a contribution to the general fund, or to the capital improvement fund, from the oil and gas fund this year, we would set in place, you know, a number of dominoes that would, that would ripple throughout the budget, including our ability to issue the capital improvement bond at the, at the amounts that we think we need to, as well as supporting some other improvements in, in the city. So I, I think it's advisable to just spend the 4%, that's what the fund is set up to do, and it's buffered from this type of a decline, which, you know, for the record, this is the first decline like this that we've had since 2008, since that fund has been invested in the, in the broader market. So, you know, this is a little bit of uncharted territory, but again, we think it's set up in a fashion that will help to buffer that.
Well, I'm not sure if you really heard my question properly. I think we, the 4%, spending rule, I think that's going to net us toward our endowment funds, something like a little over $400,000, 425, 427. And couldn't we take, on suggestion, anywhere from 1% to 4%, we, you know, maybe take 2% out of oil and gas and replace that lost money with money from the fund balance that we have, the general fund balance, because we have almost $1.3 million in there. I'm just trying to figure out how to, how to keep more dollars in the oil and gas fund to keep growing. So that's my question.
Um, I, I think that our general fund balance is appropriate for where we're at, at about 22%. And I think we're going to need every penny of that general fund balance if some of these reductions from the state materialize. I think at this point, it would be premature, in my opinion, to move any money into that oil and gas fund from, it's basically taking it out of one savings account and putting it into another. And I'm not sure that, I understand, you know, wanting to try to preserve the value of that fund, but, but again, if, if the recovery shapes up like they're thinking, this will be a blip three or four years from now that, that we'll hardly notice.
Okay, well, once we move money from the reserve into the oil and gas, I was just suggesting that we reduce the 4% spending rule by, say, 2%, and then making up the difference out of the reserve fund. Is that clear? Because I'm not sure that you're hearing...
It, it is, I understand that, but it's, the net effect is still taking money earlier than we otherwise would out of our general fund, fund balance, to support some capital projects, which is what the, the oil and gas fund spending rule goes to, rather than to support operations. And I think we've already actually reduced money from the, from the general fund that's going towards capital projects this year in order to be able to support operations, and that would be kind of reversing that. If you look in your budget for the capital improvement fund on page 133, you know, there's, there's a number of capital projects that are, that are being funded, whether that's debt service or some, some current projects. And, you know, if you want, if you, if you wanted to eliminate some of those current projects, you'd have, I guess, to prioritize what that would be, and you could save some money in the oil and gas fund that way by not taking the full allowance, but I, I wouldn't advise that either, I guess.
Wow, I still don't feel like I'm making myself clear. We would still be spending, we would still net, we would still have the $427,000 that would be the equivalent of the 4% out of oil and gas, and maybe we wouldn't take the full, you know, 4%, but maybe only a portion of it, and just replace it with our reserves. So somehow, I, I don't think that you're understanding my question.
No, I am, and I think what I said, Councilmember Beaton, is, is that by, by using the reserves that we have in the general fund to basically fund capital, we're, we're limiting our ability to be able to fund operations at a time that we'll probably need those funds more than ever. So I understand exactly what you're saying.
All right.
Any other questions, concerns?
I have a question about the police department budget. We took in a, we, we did collect some money from the marijuana licenses, so the police budget includes those funds.
Councilmember Beaton, the, the marijuana revenues are budgeted as a general fund, general item revenue. They're not earmarked for any particular purpose. So the answer to that question is no, they don't flow directly to the police department's budget.
I have a little bit of a problem with that, because the purpose of allowing municipalities to collect them is to help with law enforcement.
I have a comment on that, if I could, this is Thad.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, we, on the advice of the City Attorney, we established the fees for the, each license, the $5,000 license fee, to reflect the time spent by all the departments in reviewing the permit application and providing a level of oversight to that. And we even included costs associated with the City Attorney, all the various departments. And so we, we've had that documented, the cost that we incur for that permit across all departments. So that was always the intent, it was not to address it as a, a separate revenue stream just for the police department, because there are other departments across the board that are involved in review of the permit, site plans, background checks, all those things that are funded through that permit fee.
So you've, you've figured out a way to, to use up all of that, so none of that money is going to the police department?
No, that's not what I said. It, it's going into a, by law, we, the fees had to reflect our costs associated with issuance and processing of those permits, and we had to have that documented. And, you know, the, the clerk has a major responsibility, City Attorney, my office, Finance, Fire Department, DPW, they all have various responsibilities throughout that permitting process, and we had to document that to justify those, that $5,000 fee. And we did it the way the, the law required us to do. So that's why it goes into a general fund revenue to support departments beyond just the police department.
Well, I'm trying to, to, but my recollection of, of all of those meetings that we've had, a lot of, a lot of information that's carried back and forth, I was really impressed on that part of those fees were to help support the police department. So I feel a little bit disappointed that this, this is not happening. So that's my comment, I, I feel kind of misled on that.
This is, again, I'm not sure if I'm, I'm appropriate to comment, but this is Mick Schmansky. And as, as I understand how the, the requirement for the, the fees for marijuana facilities were designed is to offset the costs to the city, and, and it's not necessarily assumed that law enforcement would be the largest portion of that fee, because in reality, there's no evidence that there is higher crime or issues with law enforcement associated with the sale of marijuana. So I, I think it is appropriate that the city does kind of distribute it through the general fund, because, again, the, the planning commission and the zoning and planning had a great deal of upfront expenses associated with making availability for those services in Manistee. So, you know, again, I'm hopeful that there will be little or no additional expenses. But even then, as in, as part of the general fund, any of those dollars that are associated with the collection of that would, by portion of the cost associated with delivering those fees, would be equally distributed. So, if 30% of our cost in the city is to provide law enforcement, then 30% of that general fund expenditure from those collections goes as well.
Anybody else?
I'm skeptical, but thanks, Nick.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question to talk about. This is Martin Pontiac. The budget for the police department, I've got a couple of issues. I know that we're somewhat shorthanded in the police department, and have been. And I noticed that we're not having any other added police officers in the coming year. Was that anything talked about to be put into the budget?
This is Thad. Yeah, well, we did talk about it. What we did to maintain the staffing in the city is pull back our officer from the scent team and put that officer on the road. So, we still have the same number of road patrol officers and our detective that we've had before. We just don't have a presence in that scent team. So, we looked at possibly adding another officer this year, but we couldn't balance the budget with that additional expense.
Okay. It's a worry of mine. I know we've been having issues with having, you know, not enough police officers this year. And I still have that as a worry. And I don't know how other council members feel about that. Not also with not having the part-time blight officer. I feel that we still are going to have some issues with the blight.
Well, again, this is Thad. I can address the blight issue. I've worked with Public Safety Director Kozel, and he's developed a plan where we can put the entire city into eight districts and assign an officer to each of those districts. And those officers would be overseen by the patrol, or by the sergeants. So there would be a higher level of accountability and commitment by those officers. So, we are of the opinion that that will increase our blight enforcement.
Okay, and then I did notice-
Can I ask you a question? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I, it does answer it, but I still, I mean, I still am not happy about it. But I do notice that this year, we had spent $15,000, and then now the budget is down to $12,000, instead of adding more. And I would think that we would need more to cover the blight issue.
Councilmember Pontiac, this is Ed. Let me clarify that a little bit. Council had put $15,000 out of our fund balance last year to hire a part-time blight officer. That position hasn't been filled. That position was zeroed out in this year's budget. But what was added, the $12,000 was actually dollars to actually demolition a house or two, depending on the cost, which we didn't have in the budget last year. The thought was, we would basically substitute most of the money that had been slotted for the part-time officer, which will now be work that will be done by the police officers in the plan that Thad just discussed, but then also have money to actually be able to make a dent in any structure that needs to be taken down.
Okay. And then the other question I have was, what was the reasoning behind not funding the teen center? Are we discuss, are we discussing those things, or just the budget itself?
Was, was that, was that question about funding the teen center?
Yeah.
This is Thad. Yeah, we took a look, I took a look at it, and I made that decision, because, in my opinion, that duplicates services already available in the community through the Armory Youth Project. And secondly, I remember when they made their annual presentation, their last annual presentation, and they were putting up the numbers of youth that they serve, I remember sitting there and doing some really quick math, and it averaged out to about six or seven teens per day. And I think my thought process was, given that they're, in my mind, duplicating services and only averaging six or seven kids per day, I think we can, we could, in my opinion, afford not to fund them.
Okay. And then what are we going to do with that equipment? What's with the skating rink, and then skate park and all that? Is that going to be relocated somewhere, or?
You know, that's possible. One of the things, you know, there's a couple of things that I've considered, you know, possibly reaching out to the Armory Youth Project and see if they would be interested in operating that ice rink down there, and, you know, making the skates available to the community. The other thing that I've entertained is reaching out to the Manistee Rec Association and see if they would like to use that building that houses a teen center now, in lieu of some of the appropriations we give them. So basically, let them have it there for rent-free, and then see if they would get together a cadre of volunteers to make sure the skates are available during the skating system, season. So, we've got a couple of options. I mean, we could, I'm fairly confident that if we wanted to, we could relocate the skate park down to the Armory Project if they were willing to accept it there. So, you know, we have some options that we have to pursue. And quite honestly, I haven't put a lot of time into it beyond coming up with ideas, because I didn't know how council felt about cutting that appropriation. But if council wants to cut it, I certainly can continue those discussions.
Okay. You haven't had open discussions at all yet with any of these organizations?
I've had some very general conversations with the Manistee Rec Association. Have not reached out to the Youth Armory Project yet. I guess, you know, to me, the easiest would be to work with the Manistee Rec Association, because then we could leave that, the rink right where it's at. We could leave the skate, you know, the skate park would be there. And, you know, we have, we're responsible for maintenance and utilities on that building. And my thought is that we could work out some kind of arrangement, instead of them getting, whatever they're getting in appropriation, maybe we could reduce our cash outlay and replace that with a use of the building. So I thought there'd be some, you know, wins for both sides there, potentially.
Okay.
Anything else tonight?
Yes, this is Gabowski. Thad, on this reducing of the police officers, and brought back one from the scent team, we didn't replace the one gentleman that left. One gentleman's been off on sick leave. I don't know if he's back yet. The chief is leaving. We don't know if he's started looking for a new chief. We've had cost increase mandated by adverse 312 arbitration ruling. I've been asking for what the cost of this ruling has been for quite a while. Is there any way I can get these figures?
Yeah, if you're looking at just the cost of the arbitration and the arbitra- because I can give you the cost of like our labor attorney, and the cost of the arbitrator himself, I can get those numbers, as well as what we, what we're looking at in new costs associated with that award. Is that, is that going to be sufficient?
Right. I'd like to see all these costs.
Okay. I'll make them available to the entire council.
Okay. On this other, right below on page 55, it says the operational cost, cost for the vests and carriers and that. Did we apply for that grant and go for the county and that, for them to get all in our bill? And then Kozel was going to distribute them to the counties and collect whatever? Wasn't there some money from them, too?
I'm not, I'm not really clear on, you said it was on page 65?
50, 55, 55.
55.
Right down the bottom.
This is Director Kozel, if I can hopefully contribute.
Go ahead, Mr. Kozel.
The revenue sharing that we're currently in for this spring session, I guess we'll say, has already been in front of the Revenue Sharing Board. It would have to go in front of the next Revenue Sharing Board. With not having the guarantees of having that funded, as far as replacing our bulletproof vests, I had to put it in this budget, because they're all expiring as of next February. So I put it in as a placeholder right now, so we can make sure that we have that money, because it is a very, you know, a necessary piece of equipment. That is a plan to approach Revenue Sharing Board to do that.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Thanks, Chief.
Yes.
Anything else tonight?
I just want to, this is Linda Beaton. I just want to remind council that the $12,000 set aside for blight, I have been fighting for almost five years to get two Duffy torn down. And I'm going to continue fighting for that. We've lost every opportunity that we've tried to use to try to get it torn down, and it needs to be torn down.
Okay, Gabowski here again. Linda, is there a price on that that we know of?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Is there a amount of what it's going to take to tear that down?
I think they've had a couple of estimates, but we probably need another one. I think Jeff, or somebody from the city staff should answer that. But I'm just, I just want to keep reminding people that that is one thing that I need to get taken care of. And I can't believe that I'm going into my fifth year still fighting for one.
Councilmember Beaton, this is Public Safety Director Kozel again. I did get a recent quote again, because of that grant, that we prepared again to hopefully get some funding for that. And I think it was right around, just shy of 13. That was just one quote, of course. But that's what I put into that actual grant for the cost of that. And that's the one that we're going for, is to raise that. And of course, this funding that we put into the budget would be to raise that particular structure, either through the grant or through this money.
I just wanted to make that clear. I have to fight for it. You understand why, to my district, so.
I think that that house is our priority right now, above other houses, so.
Okay, good to know. We're going to miss you, by the way.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else on the budget for tonight? Any other council members have anything else? I guess the question would be then, are we ready to take this to council for an action?
This is Nick Schumansky. I make a motion that we bring the budget as projected to the council?
Mayor, I would-
Now, we're not going to, we can't make a motion tonight. We're just trying to get a kind of a consensus. Go ahead, Mr. Taylor.
I was just going to point out the same thing. You know, we can't take formal action at a work session. If, you know, unless I hear otherwise, or any council member object, I can have this on the next city council meeting for council's consideration.
Do I have any objections? Do I hear any objections?
I feel, personally, I feel that we should have had at least two work sessions on that.
Linda, could you repeat? I couldn't understand you at all.
I'm sorry. I probably talked over somebody. I might apologize to whoever that is. I just feel very short-sighted. We've only had one, this is our only work session on it. We could go to another one on April 28th. I'm still somewhat, I'm still very concerned about my original first comment about the oil and gas and the reserve fund. I'm very, I'm like, right now, I will tell you that I'm upset that there's no money from licenses going into the police fund. So, I'm not feeling positive at this point. I'll leave it like that.
Is there anything else?
This is Finance Director Bradford. Keep in mind that we do have a public hearing on the 21st. And the schedule for the budget called for budget discussion after that meeting, if there wanted to be some. So that's an option as well. But we do have to have the public hearing before the budget is adopted. And that's just only, not only required by statute, but it's, the public needs to be able to have input into this as well.
Okay. Is there anything else? Hearing done. Mr. Taylor, Mr. Bradford, do you have anything further?
This is Thad. I don't.
This is Ed. I don't have anything further at this time.
Okay, council members, do you have anything other? Hearing done. I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.